Ten times the party, a free 10th anniversary celebration for Walt Disney Concert Hall. It takes place on Saturday, October 5th, from 10:30 a.m. to 2:30 p.m., right in front of the Walt Disney Concert Hall at 111 South Grand Avenue. There will be dance classes taught on four dance floors, as well as visual arts workshops teaching sketching and ceramics. There will also be dance performances and live music that every member of the family can enjoy. For details, go to musiccenter.org. Put away your iPads, iPhones, and tablets and get back to the basics with the Global Cardboard Challenge, an annual event that invites kids around the world to design and build awesome creations using cardboard and their imagination. The event is being hosted by the Skirball Cultural Center on Saturday, October 5th, from 10 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. The Cardboard Challenge is inspired by the story of Kane's Arcade. Kane was the East L.A. boy whose cardboard arcade became an internet sensation. The Skirball is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard. Go to skirball.org for information. Wondering what else is going on this coming weekend? You can stop wondering because CCLAVIA is here again on Sunday, October 6th. The popular car-free event returns to the heart of L.A. where it all began, downtown. Residents can explore 7.5 car-free miles of streets on bike, foot, stroller, and many more creative means of locomotion. The Heart of L.A. route helps Angelinos rediscover the origins of the City of Angels. It takes place 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. downtown. For a map of the event route, go to cclavia.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. L.A.'s Chinatown kicks off autumn with a centuries-old tradition marked by music and mooncakes. Gil Reyes has more from this year's Moon Festival.
Autumn has arrived in Los Angeles, and helping to kick it off is a 3,000-year-old Chinese tradition, celebrating the fruits of our labor.
The Moon Festival is kind of like a Chinese Thanksgiving. This is where we celebrate the harvest. It's a time for families to get together and enjoy lots of great food.
And the food most associated with the Moon Festival are mooncakes. Small but filling pastries made of mixed nuts, lotus seeds, and sometimes egg yolk. People exchange them, much like Christmas fruitcakes are passed around during the holidays, a taste of nostalgia.
It's always been a big part of my life when I was growing up to participate in festivals around the Moon Festival timeframe, so I wanted to be here to support Chinatown.
The festival, also known as Zhongzhou, takes place on the 75th anniversary of L.A.'s new Chinatown, an area marked by new businesses and artistic activity in recent years. This fusion of traditional and modern elements is evident with the inclusion of the L.A. Weekly Music Stage at the festival, with local buzz bands Victory, North American, and Khan Wakhan helping to celebrate. There's also a craft beer garden, a baccarat lounge, also Chinese arts and crafts.
They love to share the culture and just kind of feels like a piece of China here.
Chinatown kind of feels like a second home to me. It feels a lot like China and helps me to really feel at peace with L.A.
Celebrating the Moon Festival Los Angeles-style. In Chinatown, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
The Moon Festival is celebrated in Asian countries on the 15th day of the eighth lunar month. This year, that fell on September 19th. Well, the Moon Festival is behind us, and so is summer, but the Los Angeles Zoo helped families keep cool during the scorching month of September with its weekly "It's Cool at the Zoo" program. One activity of the "It's Cool at the Zoo" program invited zoo goers to help paint a mural on this truck in the Eucalyptus Grove. Families took refuge in the shade while helping to create the animal-themed masterpiece on the so-called Mobile Mural Lab. Zoo goers were also treated to ice sculpture demonstrations during the month of September.
We decided, you know, it's hot in September, and we just wanted to give our visitors a good opportunity to cool down with both some cool activities that are actually physically cool and some cool activities that are fun-cool.
Misters throughout the zoo also kept zoo goers cool as they visited with the animals.
I saw a deer with a long neck. That was weird.
Billy the Elephant also got in on the act, cooling himself off to the delight of onlookers as families say goodbye to yet another summer. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at LACityView.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not, but it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they're going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember: lock it or lose it.
G'day, Troy McCavlin from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Council. If you could please take your seats so we could begin. Madam Clerk, I do believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield Bonin, Buscagno Sadio, Englander Fuentes, Weezer, Coetz, Kerkorian LeBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Coetz moves, Bonin seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Englander moves, Sadio seconds, next.
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise and we'll be led in the flag salute by Mr. Bonin, Mike Bonin.
Put your hands over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. I do believe, Madam Clerk, we can go through the agenda, if you would please begin.
Item one is an item noticed for public hearing. There are no cards on this item.
Okay, let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Good. Next section of items.
Items two through 12 are items which public hearings have been held.
Members, special, Mr. Bonin.
Item 12.
Item 12 for Mr. Bonin, Mr. LeBange.
Item seven, very special.
Item seven for Mr. LeBange. No more speakers. Let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Mr. Englander.
I was just informed, item 12 for Mr. Weezer.
We, uh...
Oh, you just did that?
I thought we did, I thought Bonin did 12, so we're good.
Can you speak into the mic next time, Mike?
All right, let's again prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next section.
Items 13 through 20 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have any cards from the public?
Cards on items 13 and 20.
Okay, let's hold those two items. Members, special, Mr. Englander.
Sixteen, please.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen for Mr. Englander. No more specials. Okay, now, I've been informed, Mitchell, that Mr. Kerkorian wanted to continue 16, so why don't we just put that aside for now and let's find out exactly what's going on? Okay, and then I'll let you know, once I find out. Okay, let's vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
All right, Mr. Englander.
Yes, item 15, urgent forthwith, please. This is the funding for the Department of Aging.
Item 15, urgent forthwith, without objection. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Where does that bring us on today's agenda?
Mr. President, that takes council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, I think we'll be ready shortly with our presentation, so why don't we begin going through the items that have been held? First item being what?
Item number seven for called special by Mr. LeBange.
Mr. LeBange, you said this was very special.
Very special because you know, Mr. President, especially your experience in the past, the key in our city is our contacts with a variety of departments. And the Police Department years ago developed the Senior Lead Officer, the person who knows the area the best. Advancing that Senior Lead concept with many new members here, Mr. Legrand, our fine planning director and his team, I'd ask him to come to the center table for a brief presentation and introduction on the Senior Lead Planner, because what people hate is the City Hall shuffle. When they call and they get shuffled around to so many spots, they like to get direct action. Now your constituents, your neighborhood councils, community leaders could call directly to these Senior Lead Planners. And I especially wanted this done in time for it. We'll get you another chair right there. And Michael, take it over. Take it over, Michael.
Mr. Legrand.
Thank you, councilmembers. Mike Legrand, Director of Planning. Thank you, Councilmember LeBange. In 2011, the department reorganized itself and created geographic coordination teams to better serve the constituents of Los Angeles. One of the goals was to demystify the planning process and bring the staff closer to those communities that many of you represent. Today, I have next to me our senior city planners, as well as Lisa Weber, our deputy director, and we're organizing the department basically in a way to represent the needs of those neighborhoods that they serve in. So the staff around me represents different geographic areas in the city with expertise in that areas. Not only are cases assigned to people in their divisions on a geographic basis, but also when the public needs to know someone to call, when they want a familiar face, they'll have this, thanks to Councilman LeBange and his leadership on this issue. This collaborates for different areas of the city. For example, in central Los Angeles, inclusive of downtown, Westlake, Hollywood, and Wilshire, that area is led by Shawna Boston. Shawna, if you raise your hand. South and southeast Los Angeles is led by Mr. Craig Weber. West Los Angeles, coastal and harbor areas are led by Patricia Dierfendorfer. And north and south San Fernando Valley are led by Bob Duennas. Collectively, these four high-level managers bring 61 years of experience to the City of Los Angeles Planning Department, and they come to the table to serve you and your constituents. Being that there's a 60-year birthday coming up, I believe, we felt it was appropriate to highlight the 61 years of service these employees have demonstrated. So we're happy to have these staff members available to your constituents, as well as your office, to solve those problems for you, the issues your constituents may face, whether it's navigating the City Hall permit process or a community issue they face revolving enforcement of our zoning codes, or various issues around quality of life. Our staff's here to serve you and make sure that we're available to the public and that we have open doors. Thank you very much.
Mr. Legrand, I just want to thank you and your team. And Patricia, when did you start with the city?
Good morning. I started with the city in 2000.
First year of 2000. We were together your first week, and I think I gave you my chair then, I give it now.
That's right.
So, great. What we have here is the contact, and so your planning deputies are the most important, because sometimes that's the hottest fire, as your chief of staff will tell you, Mr. Sadio. The hottest fire happens when there's a land use issue. These are problem solvers, so I wanted to make them aware. And also, we'll ask Mr. Weezer if his office could coordinate a meeting of our planning deputies, which are so key to this issue. Mr. Price, these are the Senior Lead Planners led by Michael Legrand, the contact points for our department. I just want to thank you, and I'm proud that we're able to get this message across and call them for follow-up. Mitch Englander, your history, you know that all the way, how important the planning is, especially in the West Valley, Northwest Valley. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. LeBange, and I want to thank all of you for the great work that you do, and Michael, for the leadership that you show. Let's prepare, members, to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that measure passes.
Fourth with.
Fourth with. Okay, let's do number 13 now, called special by cards. Arnold, are you, Arnold Sachs, please come forward, I see you now. And is Sean here, Murphy? You come on and get behind Mr. Sachs. Okay, Arnold, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sachs. This person being appointed to the Taxi Cab Commissioners, they're not here, so I might as well just address the council. It seems that the new mayor has taken it upon his, as one of his programs, to address the new abilities that are brought around through the use of electronic media. He's embracing the public's use of electronic media, iPads, iPhones, to contact, to make contact with City Hall. And yet, the taxi cab industry is faced with a challenge with some new companies that are coming in that are allowing people to call for car service through their electronic media. And the taxi cab companies are claiming this foul. They're not licensed, they're not this, they're not that, and that's a whole different can of worms. The point is here, what is the Taxi Cab Commission going to say? Here's the mayor embracing the use of these new media infomercial units. Hello out there. Everybody having a nice conversation? Hi. Anyway...
Arnold, stay on the subject.
Listen...
Stay on the subject, Arnold.
I am on the subject, I'm just listening to all these other conversations.
Just stay on the subject. Everyone else be quiet.
Anyway, there's another story that came out, not necessarily under the purgatory of the Taxi Cab Commissioners, but there's a new application that people can use to rent rooms in people's houses, another use of electronic media.
This is not regarding this item.
You're not paying attention to this.
Stay on the item, Arnold, please.
My point is, sir, nobody's addressing these as far as the Commissioners or the City Council.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Yes, transportation is good, but you need to, all taxi cabs are good, but there are some taxi cabs that are not licensed. People use them. You don't use taxi cabs unless they're licensed. Makes sense, right? I remember a commercial, "When you get in a non-licensed taxi, your life depends on it."
Okay, thank you. If I could have the Commissioner come forward, please? Oh, there, here she comes. Good morning and welcome. If you don't mind, before you start, I'd like to call on Member Bloomingfield.
Thank you. I just wanted to say a few words about our potential Commissioner here and voice my strong support for her. I've known Marilyn a long time, many years, before I was ever in elected office, worked together in Democratic Club issues. She's been just a fierce voice for Democratic values. Even though she didn't support me on my first campaign or some other things, we've always kept a good relationship, a good friendship. In fact, she was with me on my first press conference as a state assembly member. She was one of the original members of my Emergency Preparedness Task Force team, and I asked her to be here that day to speak for those who often don't get listened to, the folks who are disabled. She is always a voice for the disabled regardless. She'll visit everybody's campaign office to make sure that your office is wheelchair-accessible. She goes above and beyond in so many ways, so I wholeheartedly support her appointment to the Taxi Cab Commission. She's going to lend her voice, her perspective, and her fierce tenacity to that job, and we are lucky to have her serving the city, and I just wanted to express my strong support. Thank you, Marilyn.
Thank you. Welcome, and maybe you could, oh, wait, I have more people on the queue before you speak. Mr. Englander.
Yes, thank you very much, and we've had the opportunity of meeting in the past as well, but we work in a political environment here, one that... But we work in a political environment here, one that is nonpartisan. And it's a shame what's going on in our federal government today with the partisan gridlock. As the only, although it's not on the ballot, my name is not that way, as the only elected Republican in the City of Los Angeles, I work well with my colleagues, not because I have to, but because I want to. And I really do enjoy working with our leaders in Sacramento as well as others. You've given a lot of people a really hard time for supporting me because I was a registered, because I'm a registered Republican. And potholes in policing issues, taxi issues, helping the disabled, and the core functions of local government are not partisan issues. And we, this is not a partisan environment from my perspective. And so I'm hoping we can work together and move beyond that, because so many of my colleagues and others have shared with me that you gave them a very hard time for supporting me. And hopefully, we can move on beyond that. And I would like to hear that commitment and some assurance that you understand that this is not a partisan body, nor should we ever become that. And we should support each other in each other's endeavors. And I was blessed to have 14 of the city council members, when I'd never run for office, endorsed me, as well as every neighborhood council, president in my district, and others, and all the local community, for all the hard work that I've done for seniors and disabled and all those at-risk youth organizations. I want you to understand that we should get together and make sure we work together. I'd like to hear your input on that. Thank you.
Go right ahead.
Well, thank you very much, councilmembers, for both of your comments. They are equally valid and appreciated. I'm honored to have been asked to serve the City of Los Angeles by way of the Board of Taxi Cab Commissions. Transportation in a metropolitan such as this requires many different approaches and choices. As someone who uses a different mode of transportation than most access services, I can attest to the necessity of having different ways to get around the city. There is no one-size-fits-all. What all of these ways must have in common, however, is safety, good working conditions for the drivers, and reasonable costs based on the service provided. I believe there may be room for improvement on working conditions, on making sure that each mode of transportation reaches out to a diverse population. Any improvement needed there is very doable, and I look forward to having the opportunity to be part of the transportation solution for Los Angeles. Thank you.
Mr. Sadio.
I just want to echo the comments of my colleague, Mr. Bloomingfield. Marilyn, I appreciate you. You have an important voice. You have a, you have an important voice in this debate.
If we could keep it down. Mr. Sadio, go ahead.
How we move people around this city, how we adapt to the changes in technology, how we understand that modes of communication don't change our duties to passengers, that we all have rules and regulations that we must comply with, and that those are independent of changes in modes of communication. And I know that you will understand that. And I know, having been in many meetings with you and many discussions, that you have deep thought and that you can pierce through the rhetoric and that you can find the kernel of truth in every debate and argument. And because of that, I look forward to supporting your nomination and to your service, your ongoing service to our community. I thank you for being here this morning.
Thank you, councilmember.
Mr. Corret.
Thank you, Mr. President. As others who have spoken, I've known Marilyn for many years as a civic activist and a disability activist and a Democratic activist, but also as a very fair person. I have no fear that you will deal with all of us in a respectful and productive way, whether we be Democrat or Republican. And this council, since I've been here, has been a breath of fresh air, because we have Democrats and Republicans on this body, and nobody ever even gives it a second thought. We just all work together to solve the problems, and I know you'll be doing that as well. I didn't plan on asking you a hard question, but I actually do have a policy question for you. What your thoughts are on the sort of high-tech 21st-century bandit cabs that the PUC seems to be ready to validate, the Lyft and Sidecar and others that will have very little regulation and probably no ability to serve the disabled community or great interest in doing so.
Well, I think we have to be careful about what we're talking about. There are some different modes of transportation other than the regular taxicabs that are, in fact, not really Bandit or Gypsy or any other word. But there are, of course, a lot who do, who are working for themselves and giving people rides and not going into all of our communities and not serving all of our populations. And that is something we have to work toward doing a much better job with, as in fact, quite a few other things that involve different populations and the disability community.
And I hope the Taxi Cab Commission will take a close look at this issue, because I think these companies strike me as providing a certain amount of danger. I see people driving around in their old 1970s clunker cars with a mustache on them, and it makes me rather nervous that at some point, we're going to have some problems with passengers. And the fact that there, there's a high risk and very little liability coverage for these companies makes me very nervous. So I hope you'll take a close look at that on the commission.
Yeah. It's certainly a new day, and we will have to look at these things very closely. Thank you, councilmember.
Mr. Labonge.
Congratulations and thank you. The only thing I've been not successful in is getting a red car taxi with the red line that was initiated then by Mayor Bradley, finally completed under Mayor Reardon, all these stops along the way. If there's a taxi right there that's red, and you want to go to the Las Feliz Oaks and you get off at Western, and you have a few neighbors, you jump in the taxi, and you go right there and back for two bucks or something like this. Sometimes taxis, because I know it's entrepreneurial, look for the long haul. But if we have red car taxis near our subway stops, then we could have this, people who believe I can leave my car at home and take the MTA. So just put that in the back of your mind. I'm going to be pushing that, because all along, if we have these little red car taxis or orange car taxis for the orange line, whatever they be, you could go within the radius there. And remember, It's a Wonderful Life, was that the movie with Jimmy Stewart? You know, there was Ernie and Bert, and I think Ernie was the taxi driver, I think. You know, and everybody in town knew taxi. Well, if we knew who our taxi driver was at Western and Hollywood Boulevard, and we had his or her cellphone number, we'd probably jump on that taxi. And so I'm trying to convince the MTA and now it's the Board of Taxi Commissioners as a possibility to have that within a half a mile or a mile radius, just in the area. So it would, it would be like a drain of goodness to get all that movement. Thank you very much. And I think the other thing of technology and the new mustache cars or whatever they're called there, that's, that's a challenge, because the Internet has changed the world. And more people are entrepreneurial now individually now because of the lack of jobs. So there's a balance in safety and all those issues. Thank you so much. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Councilmember Labonge, and also congratulations. You and I are celebrating a birthday this month.
Same day?
The same one.
Same day?
No, not the same day.
All right, okay. Well, you're going to be 50, I'm 60. Okay, thank you.
Okay, no more speakers in the queue, members. If we could prepare to vote on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes, one no.
The ayes have it. Okay, next item.
Item 20, call special for cards.
In fact, you know what I think I'm going to do is call two general public comment cards, Phyllis Doherty and Arnold Sax. Arnold, you still here? Yeah. And where's Phyllis? I don't see her. Hey, Arnold, you want to make your way up here? I don't see Phyllis. Mr. Parks?
Get item 1A, 1B reconsidered. We want to give the constituent one more week to work out that issue.
After these two cards, don't let me forget, we'll do that. That's a fair request. Okay, Mr. Sax? Go right ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good morning, Arnold Sax. Couple of things. This was, this was a story, oh, you wouldn't let me mention this when I was talking about the new technology for the taxicabs, which everybody seems to bring up. And by the way, Councilmember Labonge, what color would the taxi be for the Expo line? There's people renting their rooms in their house through the new technology. And here's a concern, they're not paying the transit occupancy tax. So how is that affecting business? And business, no jobs. I find it hard to believe. Every time you approve of a project, all we hear is there's going to be thousands of jobs, hundreds of thousands of jobs, tens of thousands of jobs, 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 jobs. We have, going in two different directions here, because you are approving projects left and right. I mean, there's the two you approved in Hollywood, there's the one you approved over in West LA. There's 94 building projects going on in downtown LA. Those are all jobs, jobs, jobs. So how can there not be any jobs? And one of my pet peeves is accountability here. And this is, and because you've changed some of the agendas, you don't put the date on them anymore, and I neglected to put the date on this. But this is from 2013, and this is funds that were transferred. It was Council File Number 11, 1256 S2. It refers to the Los Angeles Regional Interoperational Communication System. And there's a line item here, 53A, for 48 cents. You can count for 48 cents.
Thank you, Arnold. Mr. Pier, Ms. Pierman, if you could come forward. Donna Pierman, please. Phyllis, I still do not see you.
Okay, while I'm speaking about something that is affecting a lot of Angelenos, the federal shutdown, there's, believe me, there's a lot of people in Los Angeles who all work for the VA and work for the Social Security Office and work for the post office and plus plenty of other federal government. We need to tell anybody of your representatives that we need to open up government. I'm totally mad at Congress, and I'm totally mad at the President of the United States. This is one area that affects a lot of people, a lot of different colors, African-American, Hispanic, Asians, plenty, and of course, Caucasians, and plenty of other people who work alongside, Filipino, plenty of people who work alongside the federal government. And if you think that doesn't affect the public, it does. If you want to go to your Social Security Office, local Social Security Office, forget it, it's closed. If you want to go into the post office, forget it, it's closed. If you want to go to the VA, forget it, it's closed. If you want to go for hearing, unless you have a hearing with Social Security, but if you want anything else, it's closed. There's nobody there working it. We finally get the area where we finally got everything up, getting all our old cases, and now the federal government chose this time to close all of us down. So the help hurts the public, hurts the disabled, hurts the elderly, and it hurts the employees and hurts everybody who depends anything from the federal government. Any one of you in the city council who are, you should go to your area, you should find somebody and tell them, "Open up government." And we need to open up video conferencing while we're at it, because I should have been in Van Nuys, and Mary could have spoke on this. We need to open up Van Nuys video conferencing. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis, are you back? Bobby Cooper? Okay, let's move back to our regular agenda. Item 16 will be referred to the Rules Committee. And so now we'll go on to item 12. That, oh, no, Mr. Parks, let's reconsider your item, which was 1B, was it? Okay, so members, we're going to vote on reconsideration of item 1B. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Parks, you wanted to continue this to allow for some negotiation.
This is the second and last continuance, and we're asking the department to go to the location and attempt to resolve these issues. But in two weeks, we would have it before us, and it will not be continued again.
Okay, Madam Clerk, two weeks, the date is?
October 15.
Okay. With that said, Mr. Weesar, are you ready on item?
Twelve.
Oh, wait, can we, Mr. Kocorian is ready for his, you're okay? Mr. Weesar, go right ahead.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, item number 12 is an item that is a long time coming and really is intended to improve our neighborhood council system. I want to thank Mr. Parks, who authored, seconded the original motion, and then Mr. Weston, who seconded a second motion concerning this item. And I want to thank all the neighborhood councils who gave their input. This item came about when we had an election at the Egerock Neighborhood Council. And whether you believe in medical marijuana or not, that debate, one side or the other, what happened there was that there were two factions who were trying to take control of the neighborhood council. And people were coming in, and they soon came to be known as the Starbucks voters, because all you needed to show to vote in a neighborhood council election was a receipt that you bought something in that vicinity, and that would allow you to vote. While the discussion came about that some people felt, well, you know, this is our neighborhood. If people just come in for one day, buy something, do they really have a vested interest in what happens here? Are they ever going to come back to a neighborhood council meeting? Are they ever really going to participate in the ongoings of our community? So we decided to look into it, and we realized that the definition of who can vote at that time was the factual basis stakeholder, which allowed for such voting. We introduced a motion and asked our city attorney and the Dunn Department to look into it. They came back with some recommendations. But before we did anything, we actually went to the neighborhood council system, and a number of neighborhood councils participated, they provided their input. And really, what we see here before us today, the language that we're proposing to change in the ordinance is their language. See, they want to change the factual basis stakeholder definition of a voter to one where it says you could, you should have, a stakeholder is someone with a substantial and ongoing relationship to that particular community. It says, "A person who affirms a substantial and ongoing participation within the neighborhood council's boundaries and who may be in the community organizations such as, but not limited to educational, nonprofit, and/or religious." I think this goes, it's a thousand times better than the original definition. But what I like about it as well is that it gives some flexibility to the local neighborhood council to further define that. So they still have that local autonomy to get even more precise as to how they want to define it. So that's the gist of this, that's a broad overview. I want to invite the city attorney's office and Dunn. Are you here somewhere? If you could just come up and, if there are any questions, they are available for any further questions on this item. Colleagues, I ask for your aye vote. I think we're headed in the right direction, just given the fact that the neighborhood council system is supporting this and that this will further help us allow local communities to have voters in their area who have an interest in the future of that particular community. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Deputy City Attorney Carmen Hawkins.
Good morning, General Manager of the Department of Neighborhood and Gracie Lou.
And great event Saturday. Okay, whoever wants to lead off, lead off.
Good morning, honorable members. As Councilmember Weesar mentioned, and I do want to thank the council member for all his work on this and in responding to his stakeholders and the neighborhood councils in his area. The neighborhood council board members through the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners spent since the beginning of this year, much, months of time trying to debate this issue and figure out how can we can make the stakeholder definition something that is inclusive and yet still protects neighborhood councils. yet still protects neighborhood councils from anyone just coming in and who may not necessarily have that substantial and ongoing relationship with the neighborhood to participate in the neighborhood council system. So they came up with this definition, and we will be ready to implement it for the 2014 spring neighborhood council elections. And we are working with the Office of the City Attorney to look at legal authority as to how to define substantial and ongoing, and so that we can have administrative rules that would help us determine who is eligible to vote in neighborhood council elections.
Okay, I do have some speakers on the queue. Mr. Kukorian?
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Weezer, for taking on one of the most difficult challenges, I think, that we've had in trying to reform neighborhood council elections and participations. Defining the factual basis stakeholder has been a daunting challenge that we've had from the beginning, and I think this is an important step forward. I have a couple of thoughts that I want to share. And first of all, this seems to have been pretty well-vetted with the neighborhood councils in terms of drawing the broadest possible input and reaction from them. My own view, I'm not sure if this goes far enough in eliminating the minor contact factual basis shareholders, because it's a self-affirmation, and what one person considers to be substantial, another person may not. If it's ongoing, a regular patient perhaps at one of the marijuana collectives that you talked about, Mr. Weezer, might say, well, factual basis stakeholder, a regular customer at Starbucks, may say, well, you know, I come here every week, so I'm a, I have an ongoing relationship. So I, in my own view, I don't know that it clarifies that particular problem to a great enough degree. That's my first concern. My second is, I don't know if this is, if this is possible to do within this framework, but it also occurs to me that if a person is going to affirm a factual basis as a stakeholder in a neighborhood sufficient to participate in neighborhood council elections and serve on their boards, they should only do that as to one neighborhood. You shouldn't be able to be a factual basis stakeholder in any neighborhood that you choose, or multiple neighborhoods across the city. You should decide which neighborhood it is that you have a factual basis to be a stakeholder in and make a commitment to that neighborhood. So I would offer that suggestion as a possible friendly amendment, Mr. Weezer, if you consider that appropriate. Or if not, I'd like that also to be at least considered by the city attorney in preparing, those two issues be considered by the city attorney in preparing the ordinance.
Thank you, council member, for raising those issues. The neighborhood councils, they did take on this issue with the receipt. Now, and you're correct in noticing that an ongoing customer for any business could actually bring in all their receipts and say, "I have a substantial, ongoing relationship." And what neighborhood councils felt is that those folks who participate in these businesses, they are stakeholders, and they didn't want to exclude them. So that's why they didn't, they didn't put in something that said, "Purchase of consumer goods or services is disallowed" as a way of proving stakeholdership. So they did take on that issue. I think what this definition assists us in doing is to allow the department, when we execute elections, to basically tell those who walk in with one receipt and say, "No, I'm sorry, you can't do that." We're looking at administratively whether we provide a template to businesses that where they are the ones who acknowledge who are their ongoing and substantial customers, and that they would basically state that, you know, these are our stakeholders and they are eligible to vote. Now, mind you, this is only applicable in those neighborhood councils that require documentation to qualify as a voter or stake, or, excuse me, a stakeholder. So there, for about 50 neighborhood councils, they just self-affirm just through a statement. Only those with documentation will require this type of letter from a business to prove their stakeholdership. Does that answer your question? Address your concerns?
It answers my question. I don't know that it addresses my concerns. And what would help address my concern is knowing that as the city attorney considers these issues in drafting the ordinance, there is going to be an administrative regimen that involves the regulation of this ordinance that hopefully we can help you to develop that will be a little bit more restrictive in ensuring that the sorts of situations that Mr. Weezer has identified and that all of us have seen in all of our respective neighborhoods is not subject to abuse, and also, not even just abuse, but isn't subject to a belittling of the significance of what it means to be a stakeholder in a neighborhood, whether it's being abusive or not. I think that we do run the risk of making transient interests be equivalent to the interests of homeowners and business owners and others who really do have a deep and substantial stake in a neighborhood, and that's just not fair. So those are the concerns that I want to see addressed. I'd like to see them addressed in an ordinance, especially if we're striving for uniformity now, which, by the way, this would be the one and only area that we've actually determined should be uniform across all neighborhood councils. And, you know, I'm a little concerned whether, you know, if we are going to go down that road of uniformity, whether we've gone far enough. But whether or not it's stated in the ordinance, if we, you know, will pursue that as well with the administrative, the regulatory scheme, I think, you know, I would just look forward to working with you and the author and Mr. Parks and helping to develop a regulatory scheme that kind of makes sense in addressing those concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Kukorian there. Mr. Bonin?
Thank you. I actually have the same concern as Mr. Kukorian with the sort of vagueness of substantial and ongoing, and I'll tell you why. At Venice Beach, for decades, we've tried to restrict the sale of commercial activity. And the courts have said that we must allow the sale of merchandise that is inextricably intertwined with First Amendment activity. And that's really difficult for a Rec. and Parks employee or a beat cop fresh out of the academy to determine. With the Levon decision here in the city of Los Angeles, we are having a very difficult time removing trash and debris from our streets because the courts have said you can only remove it if it is abandoned, but not unattended. And that is extremely difficult for our Public Works employees to interpret. So I'm concerned that we're leaving our neighborhood councils to have to fight over, in each neighborhood council, their own definitions of substantial and ongoing. And my experience with the neighborhood councils in my district has been, when they are given the time and the opportunity to focus on actual issues and on community projects, they thrive. When they are forced to get into debates over Robert Rules of Order or student government politics, they fail, and it becomes a problem for everybody. And so I don't want to see that happening. So I share Mr. Kukorian's concern, and I'm wondering if Dunn could publish its administrative guidelines prior to implementation of the ordinance.
We can definitely work with Office of City Attorney and City Clerk to do that. Like I mentioned, the city attorney's office is still doing the legal research in terms of case law that may have some type of, you know, legal precedence to describe what substantial and ongoing is, so that we can apply that type of standard throughout the neighborhood council system when we look at elections.
Yeah, I'm not sure that was a yes.
It is a yes.
That Dunn will have guidelines published prior to the ordinance going into effect?
Right, so we can work with city attorney to, I wouldn't need to work with city attorney's office and city clerk to do that. We pretty much need just that kind of legal, any legal authority for us to kind of hang our hat on for substantial and ongoing.
Because what I'm afraid of doing is approving all of this and then having some problem with the city attorney's definition or having legal challenges and not getting that in place. So I'm wondering, Mr. Weezer or Mr. Parks, if it would be a friendly amendment, if I could just add a third instruction, is that those guidelines be written prior to implementation of the ordinance?
Sure, we could make that, we could make that an amendment if possible, to have, before we adopt the ordinance, or when the ordinance comes, to bring that regulatory framework with us that Dunn will provide.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Mr. Parks?
Thank you. Gracie, remind me, I thought when we discussed this, and it was all these issues brought up, that the fact that the definition was changed, we also changed the configuration of the board, that you could only have an at-large position, which I thought only then these groups of people could only vote on the at-large.
So for those neighborhood councils who did make that distinction in their board structure, that would be the case. However, there are neighborhood councils that choose to allow all types of stakeholders to vote for every one of their seats. In the Eagle Rock situation, they did have an opportunity to change their board seats to allow for factual basis stakeholders to just run and vote for one of the seats. They didn't do that, which is why every one of their seats was, was available for the factual basis stakeholders to vote for.
Okay, at least what we tried to do is that it got too refined to start eliminating people, and they wanted to give a balance to where people could have some flexibility. And the safeguard was giving them an opportunity to declare in their board notes that they could just have an at-large position, that all of these people could only vote on that position, and it wouldn't overrun the board. If they choose not to take that option, then they're going to put themselves right back into that box. And so that's why we're trying to balance it without telling every voter and every one of the neighborhood councils, "You must do it this way." They're going to have to make some judgments on how they want to operate. And all of the concerns that Mr. Kukorian said and Mr. Bonin are accurate, except that we don't have the ability to manage every time a person shows up and says, "I'm a factual base and here's why." We think some of that has to rely on the board making that decision, and certainly we're waiting for the city attorney's guidance. But we gave them a pathway of how to solve it, and that was to relegate one position at large, so that they could say all of these factual base, or whatever the new term is, can vote for a position on the board and not overrun the board.
That's correct, council member, and this is actually just a reminder that they could do that, because they've been able to do this since 2008, adjust their board structure to prevent such stakeholders from voting for every single one of their seats.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Mr. Weezer?
Well, thank you, and thank you all for your comments on these. I think they are very helpful. And let's remember, we are asking the city attorney to come back with an ordinance, so we still have some time to do some of those refinements. I think Mr. Kukorian brought up some great points that we can look at as that ordinance comes back, and Mr. Bonin's amendment will help us make this a lot more clear, right? Because this is pretty complicated. It has to be much more clear for us and for the neighborhood councils members, and we could get that through Dunn's regulatory, what did you call it, Mr. Bonin? Administrative what?
Guidelines.
Guidelines, the guidelines. So I think that's the correct way to go. And remember, participatory democracy is very difficult. It's not easy, and it's something that we as a council and the neighborhood councils will continue to struggle with as long as they continue to exist, because it's going to be ever-evolving, ever-changing. But I think we've come down a long path, and this has taken, you know, months to get here. I think as we come back and see the ordinance, we could further finer tune this to get to the place where we think it's the best. It's not going to be perfect, but probably try to get to what our goals and objectives are and say down this path. So thank you. I vote in that we keep an eye on this when it comes back with the ordinance. My office is working with the city attorney's office and Dunn on this. Any other office is welcome to participate with us as we work with their offices to bring this back to full council. Thank you.
Thank you. And just before you get away there, Mr. Weston and I and all the members like to congratulate you for your successful Saturday Neighborhood Convention here, which is real good.
Thank you.
And on this particular issue, just want to add, would you call Seattle and Chattanooga and Charlotte and see about what they do on this issue and some of the other national cities that have these type of problems and challenges?
Thank you.
Thank you. Call and make sure you have that when you come back. Thanks.
Will do. Thank you, sir.
All right, see you, Dunn. Do we vote on this, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
15 ayes.
15 ayes.
That's adopted as amended.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Kukorian, we're ready to have some very special people here today. We welcome Mr. Kukorian to the very special podium right there, here in council chambers, for a special presentation at this time.
Good morning, and thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, we all know that jazz is one of the great American art forms. And, Mr. President, there are 25 sister cities that the city of Los Angeles has. They cover the globe, they have many differences. I'll bet that the one thing that every one of those 25 sister cities has in common is they have a jazz club. And there's people there who love jazz that started right here in the United States of America. And our city has a great and long jazz tradition. I want to especially congratulate former council member Jan Perry for paying such tribute to the jazz history of Central Avenue and helping in the resurgence of Central Avenue and the work that she did in helping to record that part of Los Angeles history. So I'm especially honored that we're able to recognize today the 30th anniversary of the Los Angeles Jazz Society. And we have officers and supporters of the Jazz Society who are here with us today to celebrate those great 30 years. The Los Angeles Jazz Society was founded in 1983 by Terry Merrill Aaron's with the assistance of a group of musicians and jazz lovers who were committed to elevating jazz, the image of jazz, and the artists that performed jazz here in our community. But over the years, the Los Angeles Jazz Society has become much more than that. And my experience with the Jazz Society has included participating in a number of educational programs that they've done in our local schools, where terrific professional jazz musicians come in and capture the attention of our young people and teach them about music in a way that they can only really appreciate by participating. And it's really a sight to behold. The Los Angeles Jazz Society has been in our school since 1998. They provide not only these free educational performances during Black History Month in February, but in addition, they're helping to cultivate the jazz musicians of tomorrow. And in so doing, they've established a mentorship program to help bring along and train and give those experiences to our young people. So through all of these many, many ways, the Los Angeles Jazz Society has committed, has contributed immeasurably to the cultural richness and fabric of our great city and enrich the lives of our residents. So I want to thank all of the members of the Los Angeles Jazz Society for their service and congratulate them on all they've been able to accomplish in these 30 years. And I'm very, very pleased to be able to recognize Flip Mann, the president of the Los Angeles Society, who is going to join us to say a few words on behalf of the society. Ms. Mann, welcome.
Thank you. This is a great honor for the Jazz Society. We want to thank Councilman Paul Kukorian and the city council for this special recognition of our 30th anniversary. Our organization is a true labor of love. We're all volunteers. We have no full-time staff to help us with our education programs, and all the money that we make, most of the money that we make, goes to our programs. Jazz in Schools was initiated 25 years ago, and since that time, over half a million elementary school children have been introduced to jazz with live concerts in their schools. Hundreds of school, high school age musicians have gone through our mentorship program, which runs for 10 weeks every spring, and many have gone on to successful careers. It is our mission to help preserve jazz, which is America's greatest cultural contribution to the world. I'd like to acknowledge some of our board members. First Vice President Lois Safian, who was there at the beginning, helping Terry Merrill Aaron's incorporate the Jazz Society. She was responsible for developing our Jazz in Schools program and is our development director. Rita Zewern has now assumed the leadership of the Rita Zewern has now assumed the leadership of the Jazz in Schools program. Our mentorship director is Larry Hathaway. Thanks to our other board members for all their hard work. We wouldn't be able to continue our work without some very important grants. From the very beginning, we have had the support of the City Department of Cultural Affairs, and we thank Joe Smolt and the two people who are resenting him here today, representing him here today, Christopher, Rita Sel and Alma Guzman. I don't know where they are. Finally, thanks to all the city council members who have attended our Jazz in School concerts or sent representatives, and several have made financial donations. And special thanks to Councilman Herb Wesson for presenting certificates of appreciation to all our Jazz in Schools musicians. And once again, thank you, Councilman Paul Kukorian.
All right. Thank you very much, Flip.
Well, thank you. Mr. Bonner? I just wanted to congratulate all of them. The team of people there is so special. I just got to say this because, you know, when there's a certain note that you hit in life, you always got to hit it again. Lois Safren is one of the greatest residents of Los Angeles and a contributor, League of Women Voters, the Jazz Society, Women Against Gun Violence, as well as all the other good things. L.A.'s best. You're a superstar, as you all are, and there's nothing like jazz. Herb, we got to play some jazz soon. All right, Mr. Kukorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bonner. And if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Safian's also one of the proud residents of the 4th Council District.
Yeah, I didn't want to brag about that.
But on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, well, first of all, let me also say that on October 27th at 4:00 p.m., the Jazz Society will be having a fundraiser and celebration to raise money for the Jazz Education Program at 4:00 p.m. at the Hilton L.A. Universal Hotel. And anyone interested in more information about that event can get it at lajazz.org. And so on behalf of the entire city council of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present this resolution to Flip and to Lois and to Rita and all of those who make the L.A. Jazz Society such an important part of our community. Thank you very much.
All right, Sherry's going to get a great group shot. We're going to do item 20. Mr. Kukorian, let's give the Jazz Society a big hand. And know that school and music is so important. I know Local 47 on Vine Streets pushing hard, the musicians' union for the jazz, too, as well as all music. Now, the next item, Madam Clerk?
Item 20, cost pressure for cards.
20 for cards. From Lenox, California, Arnold Sacks, followed by John Walsh of Hollywood, California.
Yes, thank you. Good morning again, Arnold Sacks. It's really, again, it comes down to the changes you made in your city council agendas here. It's so limited in the information. This is a Quimby action that involves development. No Quimby fees would be mentioned, and I'd like to bring up the importance of the Quimby fees because somewhere ultimately down the highway, over the hills and through the dale, way, way, far away, those Quimby fees would accumulate into something called city parks. But you have to look way off in the distance because of the misappropriation of the Quimby fees. But it's important that as the public in your neighborhood councils, you understand that Quimby fees are collected for the use of parks in your neighborhood councils, and that you shouldn't really have to look all that far off into the future to find out when a development of these parks and/or, as the city has done, parquettes, come into fruition. As a matter of fact, today's newspaper, there was a story about how the Grand Avenue Project was given an extension. But the park has been developed and paid for through Quimby fees. So why not look at that, go to your councilman and say, "Listen, if they can develop this park before they actually build the facilities, why can't we have parks developed in our neighborhood through the use of Quimby fees before the facilities are actually built?" Again, here's a perfect example. Talk to your council people. Talk to your neighborhood councils. Talk to somebody. Become informed.
Talk to Recreation of Parks. And Arnold, what was Mr. Quimby's first name?
Sorry?
What was his first name, Mr. Quimby?
The hell do I know?
Very good, very good. Felipe, you got a new park in your district because of that good answer. Thank you so much. Mr. Walsh from Hollywood, California. Thank you.
Always a pleasure to speak in front of the person who should be the president of the city council, John Walsh.
Oh, cut it out now, John.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Go there, you'll be surprised. Okay, what is this all about? It's not about Quimby fees. These are what is known as final maps. If I'm a developer, I have to go to the city and the city has, and I have to pay, the city has to come up with what's known as a final parcel map. Without a final parcel map, they can't take your property, they can't eminent domain you, they can't change your anything, your zoning. That's what's going on here. I'm not here just to use up the two minutes, and it would be a very good idea for anybody out there to go and check their parcel map to see how the city represents you, because you don't exist outside of the parcel map. And this is what is going on right here. For instance, this final parcel map is at South Cranshaw 3052, and underneath it says Subdivider West Angeles Community Development Company. So remember, what's going on here is a pre-issue before they take your property, before they turn your house into a Starbucks. And then remember, South Central is the next place they're invading after Hollywood. HollywoodHighlands.org.
No other speakers on the queue? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Fifteen eyes. Next item, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to the remaining public comment cards.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, you want to come right back out for your public comment? This is general public comment.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I want to say that I am absolutely infuriated on the racism of the Coliseum Commission bureaucracy. As you know, it's all over the internet. Someone stole the internal emails, and you know what they called? I'm not even going to say what they call parks. I'm not going to repeat the racism. And why? Because as a proud black man, he has stood up for his neighborhood. And now we see how the white boys who run the Coliseum Commission talk about Chief Parks behind his back. Let's just say that it had something to do with Nazism, and the real Nazis are over at the commission, and they're all white. Because, let's face it, folks, all Nazis are white. Okay, thank you. Now, as far as Mr. Weezer is concerned, it's time for you to resign. You claim that your Boyle Heights office is in the hands of Satan. This is true. Ask Rick Orlovic, he's been there. You hired Carlos Lopez, Sergeant Lopez of LAPD to come in and exercise your office? That's a little crazy. You're seeing things. You're under investigation by a blue ribbon committee for sexism. You will do a big favor, resign to your family, resign, you'll do a big favor to them, you'll do a big favor to constituents. You're on your way out, one way or another. Take the parachute out, and believe me, I don't think Satan is in Boyle Heights. Come to our website, and you can hear about how Satan possesses here. This is where the demon is. HollywoodHighlands.org. Go there right now.
Sean Murphy from North Hollywood, California.
Shame on Washington, D.C. for shutting the federal government down. They ought to get a life. People need a federal government.
Thank you, Sean. Sid Mandisurian from downtown Los Angeles.
Mr. LaBange, Sid Maksuian, M-A-K.
Maksuian.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, as you have seen for a while that I wasn't coming to this podium because I was taking care of business that was required of me to do so. But unfortunately, tomorrow, there is a committee hearing at the Public Works and the Gang Reduction Committee, which Mr. Buscano chairs it with Mr. Sidi and Mr. Price. I've been extensively communicating with Mr. Weezer's office regarding this motion that I also told them about 30 days ago that St. Vincent Alley must be included in the parameters of this pilot program. It seems like they don't grasp the gravity of this issue. As of tomorrow, latest this week, I will be submitting the plans for construction of redoing the sidewalks, which was done wrongly 10 years ago by this city, without any taxpayers' money involved. But there's a caveat to this. This city asked me at least certain parts of this organization for me to bring people together, make it right. I've done everything that I was asked. But if we are going to widen the sidewalks, and if this pilot program does not include St. Vincent Alley, then those merchants will have a year or two to apply for licenses for the tables and chairs. So it is imperative that Weezer's office understand the magnitude, why tomorrow's hearing that the St. Vincent Alley must be included in that pilot program. If there's someone in this body does not understand, please call me one-on-one. I will sit down, explain all aspects of what is at stake here. It is crucial. This is not a mad science. Thank you, councilmen.
Thank you. I think it's St. Vincent's Court, not St. Vincent's Alley, but technical it may seem. Bobby Cooper. No Bobby Cooper will file the card. Thank you very much, Mr. Cooper. Bill Watkins?
Honored to be here, thanks. It's been a long road, 11 years sober now, and I was on the wrong side of the law for a long time. I come from Councilmember Weezer's office, and hello, Mr. Weezer. Nice to see you. I'm the fireworks guy, Bill Watkins. We have lawlessness that happens in our area, maybe a lot of areas in L.A. Fireworks are illegal throughout the City of Los Angeles, but we had major explosions from about May to July in my area, and I helped bring about the arrest of a seller. I'm proud to say, I don't know what I'm going to say in my little two minutes, but I'll just say a couple of things I'm for, and that's being loud and proud about the law. You don't have to be bashful about planting the United States flag in our laws in neighborhoods. There's a view going around, the political members of the police, not the ones who are action police officers, but the political ones who want to be low-key and not stir up anybody. I look forward to a community that enforces law, everyone on the book, everyone on the CPC and the MPC, every law. So if someone litters a cigarette butt into the sidewalk, they're going to get nervous about that, because they may get away with it once, maybe twice, but they're going to have the law on them. So I look forward to that. This is from a former lawbreaker, underage drinker, vandal from Pasadena, used to run from police. But I found a better way, and I look forward to seeing that on our streets in Rose Hills. It's a new, thanks for our signs, which are coming for Rose Hills. Weezer and this group approved of that, so I appreciate that. That'll help us to enforce law in our area. Anyways, I just want to check in. I'll be back, and on my way to Bodry today for L.A. USD. It's a place where they don't have law inside the classrooms and out. They don't go to the police. They try to, they in-house, they in-house their behavior problems. That's a problem. They need to call the uniforms in. We need law help in the L.A. USD. Thanks so much.
All right, Mr. Watkins, one day at a time. Good job.
Thank you.
Phyllis Torri is our last speaker on this day, the first day of October 2013. Madam Clerk, make that be known that Phyllis, he or she who is last is first.
Well, it's always good to be here. Thank you. Phyllis Torri of Animal Issues Movement. I'm here actually to express to you our sadness that we understand that Brenda Barnett is being reappointed as the general manager of Los Angeles Animal Services on a permanent basis. If this happened, if it happened on an interim basis where she could be further evaluated by the programs that she's doing, mainly by the programs that she's not doing, perhaps that would be suitable at this time as we have our new mayor. But I want to ask you, when she comes in here, that you start asking some very serious questions, because the internal structure of our animal control departments is devastated under her. We have no training, we have no emergency preparedness. Councilman Buscano, if there were a major earthquake right now, we have no emergency water supply for all of the animals in the Harbor Shelter. We have none for any of the animals. We have no backup food supplies. We have no training programs for the department. You will hear from Ms. Barnett that all of her success is due to best friends. She's being paid $207,000 a year, and we are not doing as well as the county. She will tell you that we had 2,000 less animals come into our shelters last year. The county had 8,000 less, and they don't have best friends with the same number of people in the same number of area. The department is in shambles, and you need to ask her questions about her programs because she's relying on your lack of asking to get by with not performing. Please, another thing, please, though many of you have influence with the mayor, please ask him to bring back Kathleen Reardon as a commissioner. The person who replaced her has now missed the last five meetings, the one that was going to make the contributions. We need someone with institutional memory, because your commission, your general manager, have no experience in animal control. It's extremely dangerous right now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Torri. Appreciate it. No other speakers. We thank for the public comment. Madam Clerk, just before us.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Is there any announcements, members? No announcements at this time. This is the first day of October. We thank Mr. Blumenthal for that motion to get a report from the CLA and the CAO on the federal crisis that is there. Any adjourning motions? Adjourning motions, please rise for adjourning motion sergeants. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much. And colleagues asked that we adjourn today in memory of a hero and someone who was active with their church and provided a lot of community service to his community. I'm asking that we adjourn in memory of Martin Alvarez. Martin was born on September 25, 1961, to parents Alfonso Alvarez Chavez and Rosa Castro Inda in Nayarit, Mexico. Growing up, Martin received a lot of love and affection from his family, being that he was the fourth-born child. There were times that his family experienced difficult times, where Martin always remained optimistic. His positive outlook led him to be grateful and happy for everything that his parents were able to provide for him. Martin went on to pursue an education in agricultural engineering. However, he faced financial difficulties during the second year of the program and resulted in enlistment in the Navy based in San Blas, Mexico for three years. After being in the Navy, Martin made his journey to the United States where he married Annabelle Barba. Martin and his wife had two children, Joseline and Edwin Alvarez. Martin was an exceptional father who always made it a priority to spend time with his children. He also spent a lot of time and volunteered with his community, particularly St. Vincent de Paul. He was responsible for the coordination of the Christian Family Movement for a total of nine years. He worked with newlywed couples at the church in order to ensure healthy marriages. Unfortunately, tragedy struck when he, as a selfless person, on August 4, 2013, in Nayarit, Mexico, he saved the lives of three children who were drowning. He lost his life in the process. It was a heroic action, and we thank him for that. The City of Los Angeles will forever remember his heroic action and his life through adjourning today's meeting and his memory. His decision to save the lives of the three children exemplifies his selflessness and the type of person that he was, always willing to help others. He leaves behind his wife and two children. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
The city of Los Angeles will forever remember his heroic action and his life through adjourning today's meeting and his memory. His decision to save the lives of the three children exemplifies his selflessness and the type of person that he was, always willing to help others. He leaves behind his wife and two children. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks.
Thank you. I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Norman Alonso Champion Jr. was born September 1923, passed away August 2013. Although his family was primarily Baptist, he grew up in the AME Church, which was introduced to him by neighborhood friends as a youngster. He joined the Grant AME Church in South Los Angeles, where he became an active member and a Sunday School teacher and sang in the choir. He also fulfilled his duties as a Sunday School teacher for young adults, and where he met his wife, Virginia. They were married in April 1958, but both of them continued to work within the church. During the early '60s, they moved their membership to Bethel AME in South Los Angeles, where they became active members of that congregation. For many years, Norman had a desire for a structured Bible study class where he could study the Word. Upon moving to Oregon in 1988, his desire became a reality as friends introduced him to the North Portland Bible College, where he studied and obtained his Bible certificate after completing the required classes. While in Oregon, he united with the Bethel AME Church in Portland and again became a very active member until he retired in 1996. He survived by his wife, Virginia, of 55 years, his son Norman III, and a host of family members.
Thank you. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Domingo Alvaron Sr. He just passed away here a few days ago on the 28th of September. He's a father of two L.A. City firefighters, one captain over at 26th, and the other one is Albie, who works over at 56th on the heavy rescue. He's a father, he's also a father-in-law to an L.A. City firefighter, and two of his grandchildren are nurses in L.A. County. Very much his love of family and his commitment drove those people that contributed greatly to public service. I ask we adjourn in memory of Domingo Alvaron Sr. And also, members, one of the greatest guys in motion picture business, lived to be 95, just recently passed, A.C. Lyles. He was the face of Paramount Pictures. He started there at 10 years old with Paramount out in Florida, migrated to Hollywood, became a suburban city man. And over the years, he developed great relationships, keen relationships, did a lot of production work as well. And he was Jimmy Cagney's best friend. And along that, he also was close to Ronald Reagan. And when Mr. Reagan became president, he advised the president on picture, motion picture business. Just recently, in May, on the 17th, we saluted him at a luncheon, some of the friends of A.C., and it was great to see him. 95, though. That's a great, great record to get to, great birth, great life. He survived by his wife, which we wish her well, Bonnie, and we hope that we all remember the great ambassador of Paramount Pictures, who would always greet everybody so quickly. We, yesterday, were with Cheryl Isaacs, who's the head of the American Academy of Arts and Sciences, the Academy Award Group. And she said when she first started with Paramount in the late '70s, A.C. would walk in and greet everybody and make them feel at home. He truly was a treasure, a wonderful man. Let's remember A.C. Lyles today. This completes the first meeting of October, and October 1st, continue to serve the city well, and every day's a blessing. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.